Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I've got two additions for you. One would be item number nine B, and that's an assessment agreement. That was emailed out to you, and there's a copy of it on your desk. Like to add that to the agenda. And then, an item that we can list as item number fourteen point A, and that's a resolution one five five nine three. That's a resolution authorizing the refund loan regarding that that hangar project. There's a copy of that. That's on your desk as well. And then, one thing to note, and we'll show that at the, and we'll note during the public hearing, but we do have a revised resolution. It's on your desk tonight as well for the assessment. So really, just those two items to add to the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Approve the agenda with the additions?
Revised.
Very. Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve with the additions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing. Implication. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pinch hitting tonight for Pastor Peter Hunt, so I know I don't look like him, but anyway.
So I know who you are. You don't even look like him.
I didn't. That's the whole man. That's right, yeah.
I thought you switched churches.
Who knows? Well, let's take a moment to pray as we get in the meeting. Gracious God and Heavenly Father, your word, the Bible tells us that we're supposed to be praying for our, our leaders, our civic leaders, our governmental leaders, and so it's a privilege for me to be able to, be able to do that on their behalf tonight. Lord, I just thank you for everyone who is sitting on this council tonight, and thank you for the time and a service that they give to our community, this beautiful community of ours. And I just ask, Lord, that you would guide them in their, in their discussions tonight, give them wisdom, give them understanding, give them listening hearts and spirits, so that they can make good decisions, wise decisions, decisions that is for the best for, for this community. I pray, Lord, that you'll give them increase in their knowledge of you too. Thank you, Lord, for all of them that serve. I also want to pray especially for our, our police chief and our police, police persons, our firefighters, all of our first responders. Thank you for what they do. And we just pray for protection for our community as we see other communities around our country and world that are affected by violence in schools and in different places. And so, we ask God and pray for protection over, over all of our community. Again, Lord, I ask your blessing through all that is done tonight. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Are you ready? Moving on. Public comment. Citizens addressing the council. Please come forward. State your name and address. All right. Approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye. Pass. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody throws something off for discussion. We have approval of out-of-state travel for public works employees to attend the two thousand twenty-three APWA North America Snow Conference in Omaha, Nebraska, from April sixteenth through the nineteenth of two thousand twenty-three. B is approval of authorizing national community survey for two thousand twenty-three. C is approval of issuing transit merchant license to Virginia High Tower of TNT fireworks from June twentieth through July fifth, two thousand twenty-three, in the Walmart parking lot. D is approval of resolution number one five five eight eight, resolution approving state of Minnesota joint power agreement with the city of Hutchinson on behalf of its city attorney and police department, use of BCA system and tools. E is approval of resolution number one five five eight nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Hutchinson to complete an LCCMR grant application for funding of the Otter and Campbell Lakes Restoration Project. F is approval of resolution number one five five nine zero, resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of site plan review and lot split located at nine fifty-five Highway seven west with favorable planning commission recommendation. G is approval of change order number three and four. Heading number six, project number twenty-one dash oh-six, water and wastewater SCADA system improvements. And H is claims appropriation and contract payments, and that's register A. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve consent agenda. Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion pass. Approval of consent agenda two, claims appropriations and contract payments, register B. I will be abstaining from that because I have a check there for my company.
Motion to approve consent agenda two.
Alex, I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve with myself abstaining. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion passes. We have a public hearing, but we will skip down to planning and zoning. Permit year-end refer.
Sure. Just give me one second and pull this up here. Oh, it's just this. Okay. I hit the other right button. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dan Jokum from the Planning, Zoning, Building Department, here to give the annual update from last year for our department. Should take about ten minutes or so, and then we'll have some time for questions at the end. So staffing-wise, obviously, myself is the director, Kyle Dimler is our building official, Dave Holquist is our building inspector, Andrea Schwartz, planning buildings specialist. Right now, our building department assistant position is currently open. And then, JJ Berry is also in our department as facilities manager. I can't say enough about our staff, how good of a job they do providing customer service to their, to community members, contractors, and also making sure that the buildings and projects are safe for people. One of the things sometimes people forget about with safety is, is that it really starts with a safe building, and the building code ensures that we have safe buildings so that hopefully, if there is an emergency or a fire or whatnot, the building is, it can contain that before it gets to be a super big emergency. So appreciate the staff's help throughout the year. Just an overview of what we do. Building department is responsible for the plan review, building inspections, rental inspections, enforcement, permit administration, education, and prevention. Again, maybe seems straightforward, people just get a, think it's just a building permit, but really, that building permit allows us to make sure that the project meets code. And again, it's going to be a safe building for the occupants in the community. Twenty twenty-two, there is significant construction activity within the community. You probably see that out driving around. Also, there's been some uncertainty moving forward due to construction costs, labor force, inflation, all the things you hear about are also impacting the building community. And we did see within the second half of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, there was a slowdown in new housing starts, and I think that's directly related to the interest rates that were into effect and are still into effect. So it'll be interesting to see as we move into twenty-three here, what happens with new housing. Just anecdotally, talking to a few of the realtors around town, they're telling me that they've never seen such a busy start to the season with, with homes. So that's probably a good thing, and it's probably also related to the fact that there's just not a lot of inventory out there as well. So be interesting to see how that relates to the amount of new houses that are potentially constructed here in two thousand twenty-three. It's just a snapshot of the building permits issued in the last ten years or so. We had six hundred and thirty-five, and it's been relatively consistent. You know, the number is a little bit lower in two thousand twenty-two than in two thousand twenty-one, for instance, but valuation of the projects was larger. So a lot of times, it just depends on the type of project, how many inspections there are. I always like to point out, two thousand seventeen, that was the hailstorm year, so everybody in town pretty much needed a new roof siding and whatnot. So that really increased the, the load. But right now, we've got, like I said, one primary inspector, then the building official also does inspections. The level of inspections we're at is appropriate for the staffing level we have in the department right now. Again, I alluded to construction valuation here a minute ago. Two thousand twenty-two, we're just over forty million dollars worth of new valuation added to the community. And again, that's not like building permit revenue. For instance, that would be a staggering number. This is the amount of value added for projects. So you'll notice here, two thousand seventeen was, was a big year. I think that was a high school project that made that so high, but really, since two thousand eighteen, we've seen very consistent growth in, in the valuation. I think two thousand twenty-one, we were just under forty million. Two thousand twenty-two, just over. So really, in the last five years, we've been, it's been strong. And that two thousand seventeen number was the highest ever in Hutchinson. So obviously, you'll notice the rest of them are, are quite high as well. So again, a lot of that's related to just the amount of activity, but also things are getting more expensive to, to build as well. This is the amount of inspections. I noted the, the amount of building permits earlier. So this somewhat correlates with that. We did just shy of two thousand building inspections last year. New dwelling unit construction, again, I alluded to that, kind of slowing down. Most of the twenty-four units we saw were in the first six months of the year. Would have been interesting to see kind of the number, what it would have been if an interest rate wouldn't have creeped up like it did. But really, starting since about two thousand fourteen, we've been relatively consistent, again, with the housing. And a lot of it, I think, is, is, you know, and we don't have a lot of big builders in Hutchinson. We've got several that do really quality job, but they're, they're smaller. I think theoretically, some of these previous years, there might even have been more demand than what was, was built, but you know, that was what we could deliver with our, with the contractors and, and builders we have in town here. So again, twenty-three, I would expect we'll probably be in that twenty, twenty-five new homes again. And I'll allude to it a little bit later, but one of the things we need to keep in mind is the, our lot inventory. We're down to about ninety lots available, and all those lots are held by contractors and builders right now. And then, once those are used up, there's really no more platted lots available. And the plating of the lots isn't necessarily problematic. It's the cost of the infrastructure and the land to develop more, more housing units. And again, that's typically something done by the development community in partnership with the city, but the costs are borne by the development community to pay for that infrastructure and streets and whatnot. So just a little bit of a highlight on some of the, the projects that we had this year. A new construction starts, so that's like a new project. There's about a little over eleven million dollars worth of. So new homes in town was five point three million. A project over at Pride Solutions was one point eight. Sternswood, just under a million. Car Wash, under a million, and then Highway seven Industrial Park, they're putting up a new building there, just again, right around a hundred million dollars. So some significant projects that our local and regional businesses are investing in the community. It's nice to see that. Obviously, a lot of places don't have this type of investment, and I think it just shows that a lot going on in Hutchinson. These are additions and remodels on the commercial side, just over twenty million dollars there. A big portion of that was a Park Elementary School project at about twelve million. The Mitkey Midwest Industrial Tool Grounding Downtown, at the old Shop Gold, about two million. Three M had a project, one point eight, and then the Rec Center. See, I'm missing a zero on the end of that one there. It was one point five million for that project. So again, steady investment on that side of things as well. Planning and zoning activities that I highlighted previously, there was more of the building department. Had a housing study that was done. That was very, we'll probably have a separate meeting to talk about that or an agenda item here in the future. Lots of demand for housing in Hutchinson within the next seven to ten years. Upwards of potentially a thousand units of various types of housing, which is obviously a lot. And again, that's not to say that all those would get delivered, but that's potentially the demand out there. We're working on that growth area plan. That's to address that lot issue and how many lots available we have for development. Working on the Uptown Grand redevelopment project. That potentially is about seventy units of apartments. And then, in general, obviously, support the planning commission, Hutchinson Area Joint Planning Board, and obviously, questions and concerns from the, the public and, you know, various planning, zoning issues. I alluded to some of the outlook a little earlier, but despite everything going on with the economy and inflation and interest rates, obviously, you saw the numbers on the chart earlier. Things have been relatively strong despite all of that. So hopefully, you know, we can kind of continue that. We don't, we don't really know. It's hard to say. Every year, we, we do our budget. We try to predict how much revenue we're going to get with building permits, and it's always kind of a guess. And we've been pretty, pretty good at it, but you never know when things either speed up a lot or, or slow down. Again, the new housing starts probably be down a little bit. And then, that residential lot inventory is, is something we need to be on the discussion about of how we address that as well.
Yeah, I know you've talked on that before, but maybe for the council and the public, you know, what does that mean? You know, what's, where should we be at? What's the, the general trend when it comes to available lots?
You know, usually, you know, you probably want a five-year supply. You know, some, some people say three years. So a three-year supply would be for us about ninety lots. You know, if we're doing thirty homes a year. To me, five is probably better. So that would be obviously, you know, a decent amount that you wouldn't have to have a worry that you're not having enough and the, the demand is such that it drives prices too high. You know, people have a selection of various developments and housing types. So that would be a five-year supply is good. To go along with that, our apartment vacancy rate is, I believe, under two percent. So there's really not apartments available either. And again, that's usually a five percent vacancy rate is a healthy number. So really, moving forward, that, that lot inventory and availability is going to be key to if the city can continue to, to grow, and how that's financed is going to be a discussion again, probably with the development community.
Thanks, Dan.
This, again, this is in your packet. I don't have to get into it. This is just kind of the amount of applications we process. But there's about eighteen different applications in front of the planning commission this year, which is, again, it just depends on the year. It's probably a typical number. Some projects are small. You know, somebody putting an addition on that needs variance or some approvals, and others are quite large, like maybe this apartment project that would go through, or, you know, the school projects and such. So we do have one apartment project that was approved late last year. Michael Court, they're working on their first building. The building permit submitted was just made here in the last couple of weeks. That'll be a sixteen-unit building, and they're hoping to do five total buildings, kind of one at a time, and that's up near Deer Park Apartments. Dollar, General Dollar Tree, that was just on the agenda earlier this evening, will be something that's coming forward. RD Machine is working on a project. And then, again, that continued residential development. And then, it appears every year that there's stuff that just pops up that we really don't know about, and we're happy to, to deal with that as well. So with that, I guess I will open it up for any questions you may have.
Good job.
Do you see, Dan, are there any developers? You mentioned there's a core of ones that have been around here for a long time doing four to five houses.
Sure.
You ever get approached by any, or have you been approached by, you know, like, new ones that are?
You know.
That's something we go after.
Not a lot. I think that's something we're working on in our growth planning study to have a little bit of a marketing piece of that so that we can take our study and tell people what Hutchinson has to offer. Again, the developers we have in town here are great. It's just, just like everybody, labor's hard to find. So you only get so much done with this, a small crew. In the last few years here, I think it's Castle Gate Construction out of the West Metro has come out and built a fair number of homes in town. That's been helpful. So I think we'd be open to anybody that's interested in, in coming to town and, and building homes. And again, a lot of the builders that are out there now, they, the ninety lots I talked about, they own those. So they have an inventory to build on. The challenge for somebody coming in is they, they almost have to do a, you know, buy land and develop it so they have some inventory because like ten years ago, when I came here and said we have over four hundred lots available, you know, you could go buy a lot off of whoever because they wanted to just get rid of it. Now, that's not the case anymore. So somebody's going to have to spend some money to invest in infrastructure and whatnot to develop. Thanks.
So Dan, South Fork is almost full, isn't it, now?
Yeah, there's a few lots out there left that are, some lot in the river there, and maybe a couple ones and twosies there, but that south piece, I think there's nineteen homes the city approved in there late last, or actually, early. They were built in, finishing now, but in the fall of, would have been twenty-two. I think they've all been built since then, almost. That whole little circle down there, South Fork Circle. There's been, there may be a couple under construction, but that's almost full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else for Dan?
You and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to bring it up and see where this fits in with the plan about pop around town amongst industries and civic organizations that feel there might be a lack of decent hotel space.
Sure.
In town for bringing in conferences, conventions, training.
Sure.
New employees, where that fits in their plan.
Yeah, I mean, really, generally speaking, you know, the city has focused its efforts with economic development on job growth, and most cities, that's their thing. And then, you know, retail and restaurants and service, that kind of just follows jobs and rooftops. And, you know, the city worked with a developer here in the last five years on the Cobblestone Inn Suites to build a hotel there. But, you know, a lot of times hotels, they have some pretty significant formulas and studies that show where they can sell rooms, and it might seem like, you know, it's hard to get a room here, and it probably is, but they need to fill those rooms like not only Saturday and Friday nights, Saturday nights, but the rest of the time to make the numbers work. So again, you know, I think there probably is some, some more need to look at a future hotel. Part of that is probably predicated upon available locations. You know, you know, if you're a hotel, you want to be at a, on a major road. So for instance, at seven and twenty-two, the city has some land that we've studied on. What's the cost to get infrastructure there? It'd be an ideal spot for a hotel and a restaurant and a gas station, for instance. But the cost to get the infrastructure there is relatively high. So it's not going to work for just a hotel to spend that money. It has to be, you know, three or four businesses to develop that. So that's kind of the, the major piece is, you know, land availability, and then people wanting to spend the money to extend services because traditionally, the city hasn't had to get into that game that's handled privately.
Dan, any else for Dan?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Two minutes away from the public hearing, which probably. Jump into that. I'll go back up to item number nine.
Yeah. All right. You're close enough, huh?
Yeah, because it's time to get to six o'clock, okay?
Yeah, we're on that.
All right. We do have a public hearing, continued assessment hearing for the two thousand twenty-three pavement improvement projects, letting number two, project number twenty-two dash oh-two, twenty-three dash oh-two, and twenty-two dash oh-three. And underneath there, we have a resolution of number one five five eight one, resolution adopting assessments.
Mayor and council, I just want to note that there is a revised resolution on your desk tonight in regarding this assessment role. And I think the, the one thing to note is on the property. It's the, the last listed property on the assessment role, item number twenty-eight. That's the nine fifty-one Golf Course Road, and you'll note that for the active, all that is zero. And that's because that's, the city's looking to enter into with an agreement on that property owner to have that property deferred. And so, it will still be assessed. It will just be listed as a deferred assessment. They'll be activated upon future development of, of that land. You may recall at the last council meeting, you opened the initial hearing for this. There was some comment at that time. At the staff's, or, or the staff's direction, council table, or continued the, the hearing until the meeting tonight. I know Mike and John are here. If there's any desire to, to answer any questions regarding the project and the assessment hearing itself. Otherwise, staff would ask the council to, to once again, go back into an open hearing. Obviously, call for any public comment, and then if there's not, then we'd be ready to continue to move forward with action on the assessment. And then, as I noted earlier in the meeting, we do have that added agenda item for that agreement that, that would be separate from the assessment role. So Mayor, it is six o'clock, and I would ask that you consider to go into a public hearing or to reconvene the public hearing that was continued from March fourteenth.
Will reconvene for public comment?
Ask if you have any public comments. This is the moment of the the hearing where you're allowed to to provide feedback on the proposed assessment hearing. I'm just ask you come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Carried. We do need a motion to.
Yeah, maybe resolution one, five, five, eight, one. That was the revised one that was handed out to you tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A poll say nay. Motion carries.
Um, nine B, which was added to uh the agenda, is an assessment agreement between the city of Hutchinson and Mark and Laura Bullard. Um, I know this was mentioned at the last uh public hearing. Um, and this was an arrangement the city has worked on with the Bullards um since our last uh last hearing. Couple of things to note. Um, um, some of this reflects reflects back to a project that was done in two thousand and fifteen, just I guess maybe for the council's knowledge. You know, at that time, uh, the city was not going to allow access to school road, school road for that property. And so when that was viewed for assessment, it was viewed in a different nature than what we see the property as today. I would say it's similar to kind of like a corner lot assessment. Um, and so through this agreement with the Bullards, we we will be um giving them access to the various different roads. Um, obviously, they've got um Golf Course Road and School Road and even was it Twelfth Avenue or Eleventh Avenue to the to the north there. So that really changes the way that we look at um the property. And so as a part of that agreement, we've laid that out. So there's a clear understanding of what that access is. It also gives us a better understanding of how we view the property. Um, and so that's uh, that's kind of the part of what we worked on with the boards over the the last couple of weeks, both from the the access from the 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 principal amount, the interest amount, um, and the agreement that's in front of you has been reviewed both by the staff, by legal counsel, by the Bullards, and I know staff would recommend the council to uh approve that agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second by Tim. Second by Chad to approve the agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll say nay. Motion carries. All right, we'll move into the second public hearing. Assessment hearing and project award for alley improvement project study number three, project number twenty-three dash oh three and twenty-three dash oh four. We have two resolutions underneath there. We have resolution number one, five, five, nine, one, resolution adopting assessments and resolution number one, five, five, nine, two, resolution accepting bids and awarding contract. Evening, Mike.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, we're here tonight to connect or uh um comment on the twenty twenty-three alley improvements and conduct the assessment hearing. Um, for those in attendance, I'm Mike Stifter, Public Works Director for the City of Hutchinson. So um, we'll take some time uh to go over the project itself, the assessment details, and then um answer any questions you might have. Uh, again, the alley improvements project uh consists of two parts, alley number twelve, um, that is behind Taco John's uh section of the alley that runs east and west, and then alley fifty-five, which is downtown near the fire station. Um, running uh north and south between and second or second and third avenue. Um, we're again at the assessment hearing process or portion of the process um kicked off in the fall with although the project has been underway in planning stages since two thousand and twenty. So um, should mention, both of these alleys have portions that are already paved. This will basically finish and finish the paving and address a number of stormwater improvements also in those alleys. So the projects not only include paving, but um some stormwater work also as part of it. Again, kind of a different view of, again, you see the alley number twelve that runs the east-west portion versus again um alley fifty-five, which runs north-south by the fire station uh itself. Serving again both institutional as well as commercial properties in both cases. The Taco John's portion, you can see where that's at, I mean twelve, will straighten out the alley to some extent. It will match in existing pavement, um put new aprons on both the east and west portions. And then again, as noted, address um a number of stormwater issues and challenges in that lot. If you've driven uh this alley and you can see, and again, as many of them do this time of the year, um, some need for improvement, but this one definitely will benefit from. Our second one, again, alley fifty-five, this is by the fire station. Again, this one's being done um as you'll know, with the blue portion, it's the area of um what we anticipate being a future parking lot. Um, currently, we're anticipating that work to get done next year, two thousand and twenty-four is one of our projects. Um, about again, a third of this lot um to the south is already paved. We'll be doing the north portion um that you'll see in yellow there. The funding, again, we are very fortunate, um, as we've seen with a number of our projects this winter, spring come in under budget again, about fifteen percent, which has been kind of the trend we've seen um with the um bids we've received uh throughout the year on our on our projects. Um, alley number twelve again is just shy of a hundred thousand, where alley fifty-five is just over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, engineering consulting costs of about forty-six thousand. Um, we anticipate the funding to come from geo, uh general allocation improvement um funds, about two-thirds of the project with the assessment and then stormwater funds picking up the balance. Five properties um from both of the projects itself. Um, in this case, um, you'll see we are using a little bit different metric. Um, the alley metric is fifty dollars um per uh per foot versus some of the other assessments we've seen um with a different amount. So you'll see that alley portion um fixed to all of these properties. So this is again alley twelve versus again fifty-five. The blue lot um is colored here is again the city-owned portion um of that future parking lot. And then finally, uh just kind of a summary of again the funding. So with that, any questions you might have? I have none.
All right, um, we opened it up for public comment.
Once again, this is a portion of the the hearing where the public is invited to provide comment and feedback to the city council and the staff on the proposed um project or on the proposed assessments. Um, that'll be levered in regards to this project. Um, just ask that you come forward, state your name and address for the record if you would like to provide public comment.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to clo- close the public hearing. Any other comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll say nay. Motion carries.
Mike, just a quick question, maybe for access and construction timelines, what we're, what we're thinking on how long these projects would last?
You know, we've got, John, correct me if I'm wrong on this, um, a couple of weeks anticipated for each. Um, the one by the fire department, a little bit um of utility, um, work to be done also, and so working with utilities um on that portion. So there's kind of a window that needs to be negotiated for. So, but we're anticipating couple of weeks for each of them.
Yeah.
Roughly.
So.
We we should see the one on the south nearest the fire station. The concept is we'll be doing some prep work and then give the utility time to to move everything. It's kind of a hodgepodge of wires and pipes all over the place back there. So just this clean that up. And then um at the same time, there's some private utilities that will be built during that same period of time. And then it'll come back and it'll be a week or two and it should wrap up.
So, Mike or John, uh, for um casters there, do they have, is there another entrance to their parking lot, John?
Yes, they have access off Third Avenue.
Oh, okay.
To their west parking lot.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions for?
Make a motion to approve uh resolution number one, five, five, nine, one. Second.
You want to do both of them right away?
Yeah, free time.
Yes.
I'll do both of them.
Who seconded, I'm Pat. All right. Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on, uh, we have Public Works, Peter Henry report.
You stuck with me one more time here. Where am I?
Sure, I can mention John setting that up real quick. Um, this is, this is kind of the opportunity to give credit where credit is due uh for the twenty twenty-two. And I do also want to introduce, I think many of you know a lot, Tim Grackey, our wastewater manager, also like Tim's in attendance tonight, but really John, Tim, Eric and Walter, a number of other staff, certain area engineering staff uh get credit for having a very successful twenty twenty-two. And whether uh John is uh fortunate to be able to conduct the report or I'm not sure, but I I do appreciate all the the great work uh they've done this past year and uh the enjoy for me to kind of catch up and orientate myself by reviewing.
I don't know, Mike. John was mumbling something about he drew the strike. With that.
Well, very good. Uh, just a, a quick snapshot is engineering, streets, roadways, cemetery, airport, the hats, facility, water, wastewater and stormwater all under, so those eight different budgets are under the Public Works Engineering. And uh the majority of the services that Public Works provide are classified as essential or critical. Uh, the city obviously wouldn't survive without essential water, uh wastewater, stormwater and streets. So much of what we do either directly or indirectly supports these essential assets and services. So uh as you can see on the bottom right, capital and operational spending uh for two thousand and twenty-two was budgeted in that just short of uh twenty-five million dollars and uh that twenty-four point six million, I'll call it, uh, that equates to about thousand six hundred forty dollars per capita. The uh engineering um saw significant change in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh Kent Exner, our the former director of Public Works resigned after a tenure of uh more than seventeen years with the city. And Kent left on August thirty-first. Um, affected the first of uh September. I was named as interim Public Works Director and Justin Black from S E H was named as interim city engineer. Um, after determining the model to pursue for uh department leadership, um, Mike Stifter was offered the position of Public Works Director right at the end of the year. Uh, so December twenty-ninth, if I remember right. And uh was uh obviously uh here now, thankfully, and started on January seventeenth of this year. Uh, spending in the engineering group was uh about ninety-two and a half percent is capital related and uh seven and a half percent for operations. So very uh much focused on delivering capital projects in the engineering side. Uh, the operations and maintenance personnel uh really stepped up to the plate and pitched in in many different ways during the fall of two thousand and twenty-two, especially uh when I was serving as interim director. And I really want to thank the staff for their efforts this past fall. There's things that just could not have been done without the support of both the engineering staff and operations maintenance staff. Um, and it affected the water and wastewater guys as well. So um, I think uh, you know, we came together and got through um the fall just fine and uh set ourselves up well for this year. Um, in June of two thousand and twenty-two, um, we had a senior public works operator who focuses on water. He resigned and then we had an internal um internal uh promotion, which left one's position open. And we were able to fill that um at the very end of August. So we are fully staffed at this point in operations. Obviously, we're very much more uh personnel focused on the operations side. Uh, these guys are involved in a whole bunch of different activities. Um, and so the split on the capital is roughly about forty-five percent for capital and about fifty-five percent for operations in this group. The water group is uh led by Eric Levine and their job is to make sure the we got good water to drink. And they do a very good job of it. Um, I was thinking that Eric, he went, he went nocturnal on us for a while this uh this winter as they were doing some work at the water treatment plant. So um they they had people split uh twelve, twelve, kind of a shift as as some of that work was being done. Um, the water budget was just over five million dollars and of that seventy-three percent was for capital debt and uh debt service and depreciation, with the remaining twenty-seven percent um uh for operations. And there were no changes in in uh staffing there this year. Um, the wastewater group led by Tim Grackey here uh makes sure that the water wastewater quality standards are met. And just recently, uh, we had a career fair at the high school. And it was fun to see the students and how um they could see the treated wastewater that we put back into the river is much cleaner than the river itself. So I think uh I think some of them were um a little bit shocked by that. But um wastewater budget, about five point eight million. Of that sixty-seven percent for capital items, debt service and depreciation, with the remaining third um for operations. And again, no changes in personnel there in two thousand and twenty-two. In two thousand and twenty-two, a number of projects were completed or undertaken uh with the highlights being, uh, first of all, uh Campbell and Otter Lakes Restoration. So that three point one million dollar project that was funded through two thousand and twenty state bonding bill. And engineering work uh is being done to identify projects to improve water quality, reduce um watershed soil loss, restore habitat, enhance recreation. And today, the number of initiatives have been identified and we're anticipating that some of these restoration projects will be started with the this year's construction season. The other big one is the South Central Drainage Improvements. This was a multi-year project. Uh, began with the creation of a pond in Linden Park and followed by installation of stormwater uh infrastructure and reconstruction of streets on the east side. Last year was um the west side. And this spring will finish up the wear courses on Neil Avenue and Sunset Street. Um, and that really uh puts to bed a a project that's, I worked on most of my career. It's kind of fun to actually see it get done. Uh, it's for sure, we've been working on this for well over fifteen years to to make this happen. So. Uh, substantial completion of the preliminary treatment building uh project. Um, that ended the biggest project at wastewater since two thousand and seven. The treatment process was improved. Um, it offers greater operational flexibility and removal of uh Um, it offers greater operational flexibility and removal of, uh, more solids earlier in the process. There's a whole host of other projects in twenty twenty-two. But, uh, again, twenty twenty-two is a very busy year for Public Works. In twenty twenty-three, uh, some of the highlights for the projects include the Roberts Road from Allen Street to Dale Street that finishes off the work that was begun when the high school was constructed. Uh, bridge repairs are anticipated for most of the bridges in the community. Improve, um, improvements to the deck and then also ceiling of those. Highway fifteen south trail, uh, and will be completed as part of the pavement improvements. Um, this will be a ten-foot between us trail from where it ends at currently at Brown Street, uh, around to Linden Avenue. Or Grove, I'm sorry. Um, Jefferson Street southeast, um, from Airport Road up to Edmonton in cooperation with county that is being redone. And, um, there will be some trail improvements there. And then obviously ties in with a large, uh, project that McCloud County is undertaking uh, relative to the intersection there. Uh, which will include a roundabout at Jefferson and Airport Road. I'm sure you're aware of some of the, some of the incidents that have occurred at that intersection and accidents and fatalities, actually, so.
John, when is that, the county, do you know when they're gonna start or?
Uh, they're, they're actually going to be working on one fifteen all the way from Highway seven west around to Highway twenty-two in about three different projects. Um, and I believe they're starting with the west first. And then they're gonna move, um, east. And so probably I would say midsummer is when we'd see that intersection starting to go. Uh, we're, they're, they're working through their whole process as quickly as they can and, uh, and, uh, Andrew is pulling his hair out already. He's recently named, uh, county engineer there, so.
Cause they'll have to shut that, won't they?
Yeah, yeah, it'll, uh, there'll be portions of, there'll be portions of Airport Road that'll have to be closed for some time, yes. Um, and, you know, that's part of why we're trying to get that word out as soon as we can that two thousand twenty-two is gonna be a busy, or twenty-three is gonna be very busy. And there's gonna be a lot of orange cones and a lot of, um, barricades and flaggers and you name it in the community, um, particularly on the south end.
There'll be another summer, another summer where you can't get there from.
Yeah, 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 get your helicopter out. Um, uh, milling overlay projects, we just talked about those tonight. Um, some, uh, cleaning up some partially paved alleys and, uh, the SCADA s- uh, upgrades that both water and wastewater continue. They've been made and continue to be made. And, uh, once, uh, the equipment's in, you know, there'll be final touches and refinements on those as well. The Campbell Lake, um, Otter Lake improvements, uh, and restoration. Again, we expect that there'll be some, uh, stream bank rep, uh, restoration projects, uh, commencing this construction season. Many of the projects that we work on, um, require significant amount of planning, study and collaboration before we can do a project. Also, part of that is the work it takes to secure the funding for these projects. And that task can also take significant time and effort. Uh, we look forward to seeing how things will be changing. Um, you talked about, uh, just approved the community survey tonight. That's, uh, these are numbers from the last one. So we're hoping to learn, um, you know, where we improved or didn't improve or, or things like that as, um, as, uh, but I, I have got no luck when it comes to this because we probably had, in two thousand nineteen, we had one, a very bad winter. And guess what? Um, here we are again, so. Um, so, uh, we have made significant strides and we're hoping, um, to see, um, if we can increase again for two thousand twenty-three. The overall condition of pavements in Hutchinson continue to be relatively stable with a score of seventy-five out of a hundred. Um, the city's goal is to maintain that sixty-five to seventy-five, uh, score for the network. Uh, we will be getting updated pavement condition surveys and the information should come later this year. And again, that will follow, um, actual physical surveys of every pavement section in town. Overall, Hutchinson's utility rates are very close to average of the outstate communities that participate in A two S annual utility survey. Um, the water and sewer rate structure was changed, um, for implementation beginning in two thousand twenty-three. It's a little early to tell the complete impact of that. Um, but it appears the goal of remaining relatively stable with regard to overall revenues. Um, looks like it will be met with this new rate structure. Hutchinson's water rates are slightly below average. Um, the wastewater rates are slightly above average and the stormwater rates are, uh, well below average for, um, reporting communities outstate Minnesota. Now, Public Works labor tends to stay relatively level over the years. Um, we can see very, you know, up a percentage or two here and there and down and round and round. And we end up where we are. Uh, water and wastewater treatment plants, um, represent about twenty-five percent of total labor spending. Um, it should be noted that, uh, you can see kind of down to the bottom left, uh, that, or bottom right, I'm sorry. That about fifteen percent of our, um, is covered in compensated absences such as vacation, sick leave, duty, other paid time off. Um, so practically for the department, that means there's about four people gone on a given day. Um, so we need to be flexible in how we provide these services, recognizing that, um, that's, that's the case. When it comes to overtime and premium time, uh, as you, as one would expect, uh, snow and ice and treatment plants make up the bulk of that, uh, that cost. And in two thousand twenty-two, forestry represented five percent, which is quite high, um, given, um, our history. But if you recall, there was a pretty significant, um, storm event in early August that affected that. Uh, to account for any weather-related variations in labor costs as Public Works Department, we typically look at a five-year window, uh, as we work to anticipate what our labor needs will be for a given year. And, uh, work will continue, uh, to, on establishing the best organizational structure that we should be operating with. Uh, throughout two thousand twenty-three, Mike will be working with people in the department as well as others to determine the best and most effective organization for Public Works Department. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I can tell you, uh, we are patching, but I woke up this morning and I looked at my phone and it said four degrees. And I said, no way, that can't be right. So I popped open the computer and looked. I was happy it said five, so at least it's going the right way. So then I had said, I, that, that doesn't seem right. So I looked on National Weather Service and said, not only is it four degrees, but you have a five below windshield. Um, it's kind of hard to get, kind of hard to get roads fixed at five below. I can tell you that we do have a supply and thank God we do. Um, we were able to find some, um, patching material that's appropriate for this kind of weather. Um, it was not easy. There's not very much available anywhere. And, uh, so we did actually order some from, all the way from Texas so that we could get some here. Um, the guys are out doing their level best to chase the big holes down. And, uh, we do have a significant work ahead of us, um, particularly on Second and Dale and some of the other seal-coated streets. They did not fare well this winter, um, but we'll get on them as soon as we can and as soon as conditions are fit. We should be starting up, um, street sweeping operations here very shortly. Again, kind of hard to spray water when it's five below windshield. So soon as the, soon as the weather's fit, we'll, uh, we'll get back to it, so. Uh, any other questions?
Well, John, I gotta tell you, I, I did have somebody asked me, said, have you driven on, on Second Avenue lately? I go, yeah, I use a piece of gum in my teeth.
Yeah, um, hey, put your polygrip in and you should be good. But, uh, we have, uh, yeah, we already have one project on, uh, that's being quoted right now to, uh, do an overlay in front of the grade school, um, from Lynn Road back to Grove Street where we ended it, um, coming downhill, and that has behaved quite well. Um, we may extend that to the west and even to the south. We'll have to see, um, where our funds lie. And, and we've got some, some, uh, projects coming out of the miscellaneous infrastructure that we may end up needing to do that, so.
The second question I got for you, John, is, um, the catch base, since most of them seem like they're open, huh?
Yes, if anybody does have in, um, you know, some problems with them, please let us know. But, um, we've gone through, um, earlier as we're starting to see significant melting and we make sure that those are open. Um, you know, barring another significant snow event, we should be in pretty good shape that way. We've pretty much gone through the whole community and, and found most of those. So, but if somebody does notice one, we'd appreciate a call, so.
Yeah, what number can they reach you at?
Uh, two, three, four, four, two, one, nine.
All right, any other questions for, or comments?
Right.
Thanks, John.
Next year, I'm gonna let Mike do it.
You gotta fix the straws, John.
All right, moving on, uh, we have requests related to deferred assessment on property located at eight forty-five Highway seven west.
Uh, Mayor and Council, in your, um, packet tonight, there was a, a letter from the property owner at eight forty-five Highway seven west, kind of laying out their request to the council. They had been in conversation with staff over the last couple of weeks, obviously. Um, staff doesn't have authority to, to waive or to, to act on, on the type of requests. And that's, um, having spoken with the owner, um, I did inform them I could bring something to the council for your, your consideration. So you have something in front of you tonight. Um, the request is to waive the outstanding interest on the deferred assessment. Um, I did include a, a memo in your packet, kind of just highlighting a little bit of, of history, at least in my tenure being here. Um, that is not something we have done, um, in the past, uh, as a city. It's not saying that we haven't had requests under doing it and doesn't say, uh, it doesn't say that the council can't consider some of those requests. Um, I think there's just a couple of things we need to be mindful of is the amount of deferred assessments that we do have in town. I think I noted in the memo, there's over seventy deferred assessments with principal balances over nine hundred thousand. From just talking with staff, we have done some arrangements where you, you may reassess a property. Um, we had something similar tonight where, um, we didn't, you know, waive any of the fees or the interest, but we reassessed something, um, according to our formula. And so the request in front of the council is to waive all the interest. My concern with that is, I don't remember exactly the amount of properties that were assessed at that time. That was not offered to any of those other properties. Um, so I were to think if you were to consider it, I, I think you'd want to take into account the term of the original assessment and those that had to pay for the interest over that, that term. But I've laid out a couple of different options for you to consider if it's something that you, you do want to consider. I think it is important to highlight that, um, this came up probably five or six years ago. Actually, it was with the townhomes that were being considered at the time on Century, which we had a request from that, from that developer to, to waive the entire assessment. Um, the council had some conversations, the developer ended up pulling that request at some point and just ended up paying off. So we never really kind of acted on that. But one of the things that we did highlight was that with our current policy, some of these deferred assessments, um, have interest rates that go out quite a long time or, and are quite high. You may recall when interest rates were two, three percent. Um, sometimes we were assessing properties at five, six, seven, eight percent. And when they have an deferred assessment, that interest rate stays for the life of, of that term. And so you might have some of these assessments that have deferred assessments that are twenty years at, you know, five, six, seven percent, which, um, on a property like this, the original assessment was thirty-six thousand dollars. We have interest that's now gone to be over thirty-one thousand. Now, some of that is, you know, the arrangement between the city and the owner to, to have those deferred assessments. But one of the things that we've talked about from staff is, you know, do we need to relook at our assessment policy to where maybe when the original term of the assessment is up? So most of our assessments are ten years. Do we need to look at potentially dropping that assessment rate down to maybe one percent or something? Cause there is obviously some cost for the city to, to, uh, to incur or to hang on to those, uh, assessments, so. Um, I laid out some, uh, potential scenarios for you to consider if it's something that you, you do want to take into consideration. Um, one is, you know, granting the request of the property owner. And the other two is, um, some options that would alleviate some of the interest, uh, potential, potential costs. Um, but like I said, I think it's important to note, um, the, the potential precedent that you'd be setting as, as a council. Something like this, I'll be open to answer any questions that, that you may have.
So Matt, just to be clear, we've never done that, right?
Not in my tenure.
Sure.
So we've restructured, you know, we've had some, uh, um, assessments where, you know, I think, um, I'm trying to think, there were some developments where, I'm just gonna throw in another, the, the assessment was fifty thousand dollars and the interest rate, uh, we had thirty thousand dollars of interest. We kind of reassessed that to property, so that wasn't, they didn't necessarily have to pay that eighty thousand upfront, but they end up didn't, they did end up paying that back over, over a period of time. Like I said, the request is that the owner would pay off the principal balance. Uh, they're just asking for a relief of, of the interest. The only other time that I, since in my years, eight years of being here, it was a request to waive everything, which I know that we have not, we have not done. Um, our policy does give leeway to the council to consider, um, interest and the fees collected on interest. Um, but like I said, in my tenure here, it's not been something we have done as a council. But I think it's some for us to at least talk about and consider the, so then I'm not saying it's even the city's fault, the burden that you end up putting on some of these properties where you're gonna have a deferred principal assessment with interest that seventy, eighty, ninety, hundred thousand. Now, once again, that was at the request of, you know, to, to defer assessment, there has to be a request from the property owner and the council has to agree to that. So it's not like, um, it wasn't, that was something that was kind of done behind closed doors. It was something that was.
And we have the same property owner.
Um, this, and this property has gone through two different deferrals. One was the original property owner, they sold it, there was a request to continue that deferral. Um, and that's where we're at today. And now, obviously, the, as the letter noted, they're in the process of selling it again, uh, which I'm assuming the buyer has obviously raised some concerns of having that deferral hanging over that property.
When would this decision have to be made by? I mean, if we put it on a calendar, I mean, as opposed to tonight?
What do you, so?
Well, I mean, we, and going into this, I'm looking at this, the complete change of policy and what the city council has experienced before, I wasn't involved in the ten- and what the city council has experienced before, I wasn't involved in the ten years ago, of course.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, it, the question I have is, uh, what worms are we opening? What is the city's assessment rate and are we following that? And what is the latitude there?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and the assessment rate is different for every property, for every project, cause it's based off of the time of when that's being dealt. I mean, I think this one is, is at four point.
Six, eight.
Six, eight percent. I know we've looked at some that were eight percent, nine percent. And then some that are in recent years, those are gonna be at two percent, three percent because of, it's tied into what the interest rate of the bond is at the time we do that project.
Okay.
Now, I think staff has acknowledged those get to be some pretty high interest rates when it's a twenty-year deferral, a thirty-year deferral. Um, and should we be considering changing some of that?
Right.
We've proposed, we've come up with some language, it's just, it's never gotten to the point where the council has said, we should maybe look at this, this policy.
The original assessment was two thousand and four, so we're looking at nineteen years, where it's been.
I mean, we've got some assessments that are in the books from the seventies.
Yes.
Some deferrals.
Well, one of the things we, I did do, and this was um, working with Kent and, and SEH. Um, so we do have some draft language that would address um, the uh, interest on deferrals being tied to the life of the, of the issue. And then following that, dropping that pers- that, that interest rate back down to uh, one percent per year after that.
So giving an example, they use this project for, you know, so the original assessment was four point six eight percent interest for ten years. Um, now, all the other properties along that road that paid that assessment either paid for it upfront and avoided the interest or they paid it over that ten-year period. Um, you know, so that's, I will say that's, in my mind, that's the difficult part of waiving all the interest. Um, we provided a scenario where they, they still, the property, the proposed property owner would still have to pay the interest that occurred over that, that ten years, because essentially if you were to waive all the interest, they'd have a deal that wasn't offered to any of those other properties um, on that street. Um, but then after year ten, if, if it's still in deferral, you look to drop that down to one percent. Just, I mean, just because these interest rates continue to get, but that's not our current policy. That was something that kinda came up through discussion after the last time a similar request was presented to the council. Except that was probably back in eighteen, I think was the last time we've had something similar coming forward to the council for consideration. So, I mean, I think they're looking to be closing on this property April third. And I told them, you know, this is a late, this is a late request. I can't guaran- I can't guarantee that the council is gonna be able to act on something, but at the very least, it gets in, it gets in, in front of you for at least thought and consideration. But there's, you know, I include the assessment policy in, in this packet. It's what, twenty pages? Um, and I've got a list in my office of the seventy-some assessments that we have on, or deferred assessments that we have on file and what all those interests are and. Well, in fairness to the people that paid all that interest, I think we, I'll, I'll make a motion to deny the requests. And I'll add that we should maybe look at our policy.
I second that and I'd agree with the looking at the policy, cause it's very hard to change something now in midstream.
Under reading, we have a motion by Chad, second by Tim to deny the request. Any other discussion?
No, I think. Is there a time frame you'd like for us to get this potential policy ideas back to the council for some thought and consideration? Well, we can wait till the next meeting. So, I mean, I just saw, I, cause I think what happened the last time, we had a similar type of discussion. And then I'll be honest, it kinda went away, the developer and then COVID kinda hit. And I think we all just kinda forgot about the, and so if there's a desire to try to look at this this spring, this summer, that's, that, at least I can give staff that direction of, okay, we got, we've got one request, we're likely gonna get more requests, we need to deal with this now, so.
I'd like to see something by June. That gives you a, a role made of, John, you've got some stuff written down, you said, from previous with Kent and some verbiage. I don't.
And then I think it'll also give you, you as a council and those who have deferrals, what a potential financial impact, so.
Yeah, I agree with Chad and it's not fair for the people to, to pay that than also.
And the reason I ask about the timeline, if it was three months from now, we'd have time to act and perhaps slip this in here, but I'm not attuned to changing of prior council's policy and changing policy in one night based on, you know, one request. Versus, we're gonna have a ton more if that happens. And if we have it straightened out, then we can go back to everybody who's onto that and everybody's on the same page.
Correct.
The timing's really tough and I understand if you guys are the ones that have someone coming to purchase, that, that's, have we been able to get this, and I don't know when your purchasing all came about and whatever, but it just, for us to make that decision in fifteen minutes is not, not fair to the people that had paid and not fair to you guys, but uh, that's why. It's just a tough time. Yeah, I can't make that decision. And I've looked at all this stuff, we get our packets last Friday. Just the timing stuff.
Ready, any other discussion? Otherwise I'll call a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, uh, moving on, we have here pro, Hanger Project, award bid and approve work order, authorizing inter loan fund.
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this was uh, at the March uh, twenty-second, we opened bids on the hangar project. And uh, we received six bids, I believe, but in any case, we had uh, you know, one above and five below and, and we actually did get a quite good um, a bid from Everstrong, somebody who's done work at the airport before. Uh, so uh, considering that good bid that we received, uh, we are recommending that we proceed with the project. And the project really comes down to three different pieces. Um, first would be awarding uh, Everstrong Construction Bid for five hundred ninety-six thousand, one ninety-two for the hangar, um, contingent on uh, federal funding. And then the second piece would be to approve work order number seven with Bolton and Mank, um, Construction Administration for ninety-five thousand. The third would be to authorize an inter fund loan of up to four hundred thousand, which is represented in the handout that you got tonight. That would be Resolution one, five, five, nine, three. Uh, the loan is intended to be paid back with uh, bipartisan infrastructure law funding that the airport gets every year. Um, so in twenty-three and twenty-four, we have a total of three hundred and four thousand. We're anticipating uh, our, our receipts in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six to be approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand per year. So we would have enough uh, available to have um, adequate um, reserve if there's any, anything that goes over. Um, so I appreciate uh, Mr. Reed's work on this resolution. Um, and uh, helping us get through this project. I think it's a good project. This would build two oversized hangers. They're fifty-five by fifty-two. Um, and there'll be two, two of them and then the door clearance on each of them is sixteen feet. So that accommodates some larger aircraft at the air, that, that operates out of Hutchinson. Um, twin-engine aircraft and um, spray aircraft also, so.
So right now out there, John, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, the hangers we have now don't, don't uh, fit the planes that will go into these hangers, correct?
Correct. Um, we do have one spray aircraft that's in one of our larger, largest hangers. And um, they have to do a little dance and then um, hope there isn't any gust of wind or anything to get their airplane in that hangar. It's quite an operation to get it in and out, because you have to kinda get one wing going and one wing going and uh, not a lot of wiggle room there, so I'm sure that would be. Um, I, I don't foresee any issue um, filling these as soon as they're built. I probably foresee more of a fight before they're built, but uh, you know.
You could be right there.
Who guess what? But um, but I do think there, the needs there. Um, we do have a few larger aircraft on the field. Um, some of them that are um, barely fitting into what they're in now. And they would be certainly like the additional room. Um, but a good project, very, very good bid. And again, from a contractor that we're familiar with and that has done work at the airport before, so.
John, this were the public and the rest of the council. We do have, what is there, twelve people on the waiting list?
Probably, yeah, anywhere twelve to fifteen people on the waiting lists, so.
So it's kind of a deal where if we build more, they would fill them, so.
Yeah. And, and as you can imagine, uh, talking with FAA folks with uh, you know, uh, there's a lot of airports doing very similar projects to what we're doing um, to utilize this funding and to prepare. Um, so they're, they're very busy uh, stamping hangar plans. Um, and uh, I think good bidding, um, we were very fortunate to get the bids we did, so.
Time frame on that, John?
Uh, I would suspect we would start, um, probably the buildings themselves would start going up in the fall and be opened up by early next year. Would be reasonable.
Because you got two action items. One is first off to, you know, award the bid, approve the work order. And then the second one is that resolution, um, authorize an inter phone, inter fund loan.
I'll make a motion to approve both. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve both. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on. First reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash eight-three-eight. Ordinance amending chapter ninety-five Public Parks.
Mayor and Council, you have in front of you tonight, um, ordinance twenty-two dash eight-three-eight, which is amending chapter ninety-five. Um, I would say most of this is probably a procedural thing for staff, just trying to make it a little bit um, easier to handle some of uh, the requests that, that come in. Um, you know, we adopted this ordinance or some of these changes a couple of years ago. Um, just with some concerns of, you know, wanting to be able to have something in place where if you get these large gatherings, um, that at least we kinda have, have a heads up for it. Um, and that worked, that, that's worked out fine, but we've just kinda gotten to a point where does the council really wanna be approving picnics? Um, you know, if they're gonna have a family, a, a tire and there's seventy-five people being there. Um, we, we just didn't feel that that was something that was needed by the, you know, they stopped, uh, obviously reserved the space through the parking rights department, but we didn't feel like there was a need to have to come forth and have the council approve those things. Now, you know, if they need to, they wanna get a, an exemption from the noise ordinance, cause they, they haven't abandoned. All that stuff still needs to come to the council, but um, just the, and so that's mainly what the purpose is behind this ordinance, is just making things a little bit easier. Uh, maybe taking away some steps that we just felt weren't necessary um, for somebody looking to, to use on parks.
The timing too for people.
Yeah. So we'd ask you to consider our first reading of this ordinance. Make a motion to approve the first reading. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, setting joint meeting with the Hutchinson Utilities Commission.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we, we've tried to at least once a year, and it's probably been a couple of years since we last had our joint meeting, but just to sit down and meet with the Hutch Utility Board. It gives an opportunity for the, the council to hear kinda what's going on up at Hutch Utilities and vice versa, gives us an opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on down here um, at the city. Um, also, we've got a couple of new council members um, who maybe even haven't really heard, you know, a lot of what Hutch Utilities does. And so um, we just felt this would be a good time to kinda really have that joint workshop. Um, for the councils to hear a little bit about what's going on at, uh, at Hutch Utilities. And so they provided us with some dates. Um, the timing for us is gonna work best in the afternoon. I realize that it's probably gonna be difficult for all five of you to be at one meeting, but I wanted to at least try to set it, at, at least get a date or maybe two where we feel like the majority of you can be there, um, so we can go ahead and get that scheduled, so.
Speaking for myself, the only day that doesn't work for me is April twentieth. The others, the other four, just to throw mine out there.
Oh, any day's good for me, cause everybody tells me I don't work anyway, so.
I emailed your dates. Later, it was probably in a, right before the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I always go through last minute stuff.
What date worked for everybody?
Um, I can try to make any of the dates work, it's just April and the bike industry can be a wild one, so it'll be pending what's going on.
We take it, take out for a test drive and.
Yeah, there you go, yeah.
So what, what they work, Pat, so the twentieth won't work for him, um?
The only thing that doesn't work is that Wednesday, I think. Maybe the nineteenth. Twentieth is a Thursday.
Twentieth is Thursday. So do you wanna go the seventeenth on Monday? Does that work for everybody?
Works. I would make that a motion.
What time?
Since.
One o'clock?
We're looking to a meeting after one.
Anytime after, I mean, one, one, one is fine, so. Does it have to be that early? Nope. Would you just say anytime that, that afternoon? And I'll, cause I maybe work with Hutch Utilities and then we, we'll formally get that posted when we're ready, okay?
Seventeenth and.
Just the seventeenth and.
Determined.
Twenty be determined, okay.
Okay, is that?
Yeah.
Good for you guys?
Yep.
And Chad made that a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to set the meeting with Hutch Utilities on the seventeenth. Time need be determined. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, governance, we have December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two preliminary financial statement and local sales tax update. Uh, City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Re- Investment Report for February of two thousand twenty-three. Library Board Minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes from February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Chief Griffin, do you have anything for us tonight? Maybe just the update on the police station? I, everybody, everybody's been asking me, they see that most of the construction guys are gone, so.
Yeah, that's part of the problem. Yeah, uh, we are nearing completion. Um, I think probably by the end of April, we should be getting keys to the place, which means final inspections will be taking place sometime around mid-April uh, to the end of April. Uh, really, um, kinda some of the HVAC balancing that has to be done is taking place now. Obviously, that won't be finalized till uh, the building's occupied. Um, punch lists are being created by um, city staff and also by the architect and by the construction manager. Um, and also the commissioning agent. Um, so once those have been established, then we'll get contractors to start finishing the things that need to be finished. Um, I think we're still waiting on a few pieces of glass, um, but.
Those glass guys, I tell you. Those glass guys, I tell you.
But other than that, um if you've been by there in the evening, it's the exterior lighting has been lit. This looks to be a beautiful building. Hopefully, the city appreciates it. I know that I do. I know the police department does, but. Uh that's really about it. Again, we we hope to move in. Um I know it keeps moving back further into twenty twenty three. But I think our new date is sometime around that first part of May.
Mary, any other questions for the chief?
So you can't ask how many times? Is there jail cells in there?
We have four hour holding cells.
Are they holding cells?
Holding, we can only hold individuals for four hours.
Good operate large to begin with.
Uh well, they they have to be a standard size. So, yeah, I.
They got a nice cement bed.
Um I will say for any of the community that happens to be listening or watching, um we will be conducting open houses once. Everything is complete um prior to us moving in and and opening for business, so that just stay tuned for that to be announced.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, chief. John, do you got anything else for us tonight? Mike? All righty, uh Dave, let's start with you.
Only thing I can say is the turkeys are out and about. Their industry's eating gravel, so just drive slow and you don't have to stop. They'll get out of your way.
They will peck on you if you're.
And they may, but they're, you know, if you just go slow, they're gonna get, they won't get run over there. Just a shade smarter than that, so.
Pat?
Nothing.
All right, Chad?
Nothing.
Tim?
Veterans Business Outreach Center uh will be opening here in Hutch with uh all the whistles and bells for our veterans of the community. Uh new H C V N video the other day with Lisa Dytel, who is a veteran who does. Uh the handicap outreach, so we have a new show that we've done for. Last couple of years, so that new edition's coming out with uh all kinds of what the benefits are of for the uh veterans in Hutchinson.
Thanks. Matt? Just an early reminder, our spring cleanup is set for April twenty second. And it's tough to think about that when we still have all the snow, but it's a, it has been set. And then I I did want to ask, I know. I think some of you received an email regarding sidewalks and and snow removal. Um I did not receive it. Chad forwarded to me. Did anybody respond? Otherwise, I I can I can send a response. You know, there was some questions I have, because I I'm not sure if it's. If it's private sidewalks or if it's public, um because there is, that obviously wouldn't impact the city's response on something like that, but.
Okay, I thought it'd be a nice little project for you.
Yeah, I figured that out, so, but, all right.
Running salt?
Anything it takes.
Always, that's it for me.
All right, um just wanted to actually congratulate Ed Holman on a. Great career, uh started out on the mat and ended up uh. Rapping for a number of years and then uh was uh. Ended up uh doing a little. So congratulations to him. Um besides that, everybody have a great evening and uh so adjourned and go home.
Have a great Easter.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat, the attorney, all in favor, say aye. We'll say aye. Carrie, good evening.